Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 11th Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call trustee Kelly, trustee Njengga, trustee Addisobi, trustee Gale, trustee Lancy, trustee Kerwin, trustee Rad, trustee White, and President Saunders.
Here. No, she's not coming. She's not feeling well. Okay, so we will have, we're gonna have communication from the public. How many people do we have?
We have seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
We have eight people, so please be mindful of the time. Thank you. Okay, first.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon educational official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustee and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Bishop Edwards.
Thank you, Madam President. This is all, Madam President, this is all. Thank you, Madam President, and to our superintendent, and to all that's present. I didn't want to parade, I didn't want to rain on the parade of these young people that are here, and I want to celebrate them and Mark Mary, who's doing a fantastic job in revitalizing, revitalizing our football program.
That's right.
However, I am the Educational Chair of United Black Clergy of Westchester, a group that consists about 30 churches in Mount Vernon, as well as the senior pastor for the last 33 years of the Friendship Unified Fruit Baptist Church on 9th Avenue. I have to say that because there are new trustees that we don't know who you are. Perhaps you do live in the community, and, well, you have to live in the community, but we don't know who you are, so I think that we need to provide introduction to who we are. We have a history with this Board of Education. Reverend Marzal will also speak, and we'll give you some kind of narrative, and we've always have been on the side of pro children. At many times, we had to come to the Board to talk about our support, and tonight I'm going to talk about our support. Our support of this superintendent, of the work that she has done for many years, and currently the work that she is doing. We want to applaud her for opening up our schools on time. We want to applaud her for assembling an amazing team. We have watched the team that she has assembled. She have looked out and got the best persons that will help her as we continue, as I said earlier on in her selection, the continuity of education. We on an upward trajectory, and we don't need no interruption or anyone to hinder the work that's being done. Last time we spoke, we spoke of because, and we support her 1,000%, we talked about respect. We hearing some things and rumors, you don't buy into rumors, but leaders, we always have to pay attention to, that there are some people or a person that speak quite despairingly against our superintendent of schools and what she have done and continue to do, and question her integrity. Well, without any question, this community stand with this woman. She have proven herself over the years of bringing thousands of dollars through grants to help ease the burden of the taxpayer. We do not, we do not, hear me, take lightly to anyone who will disrespect our educational program that sit on the board and refer to this effing, this effing school district. It will not be tolerated. Now, right now, all of you are in power. You're in power, but you must run your race. But at the end of your race, you have to be accountable to us voters, and we will not stand for disrespect. We fight against anyone who disrespect anybody on this board. And so when we hear these things, it may not be true, but if it is true, this behavior will not be tolerated if it's circulated in the community. Everything you do, we watch you, we watch you and take a note, and you under scrutiny. So you have our support. In the best of times we've been there, in the worst of times we've been there, we have not backed off, we have not backed away. You do have a feliciterary responsibility to make sure that every dollar that come into this district is spent on our children, and we believe that you have, that you all are competent enough to make that happen. So thank you, and please, let's support our superintendent, and let's be mindful, there's some things that was dropped into her lap, some things was good, some things was undone, and some things need to be completed, but I think if we give her the time and the respect, I think our district will be better off. Thank you. We love you, Dr. B.
Our next speaker is Pastor Marzal.
Well, there's not much to say after Bishop speaks, but I do, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not much to say after the bishop speaks, but he did initially talk about UBC and our interest in the Board and the education of our children. For many years now, for a few years, we've not been actively engaged. We began this process back in 1995, and as a result of that, the Board looked like it looks today. When we first began this process, Patello was still superintendent. ICA ran the Board, but we went into the streets, we galvanized the community, and we thought it was important that our people be represented as members of the Board, the trustees. And to that end, we've come to a place now, as Bishop was talking, we have a superintendent that's homegrown. We've only had two. Brenda Smith was the other. Other superintendents came from other districts and from other places, but we have one in our midst now who loves Mount Vernon, who has served Mount Vernon in many capacities, and has earned the right to lead us. And what we need is support for her, because she is our leader, and she is given the responsibility of taking care of and educating our children. So I say that to say that we're going to get busy again, because rumor, rumor, that y'all ain't working. Recently, one of you left, if I'm right. Could be a rumor, but that's what's in the street. One person resigned. And so what I'm saying to you, that you are called, and let me say this very clearly, this ain't politics. You have a sacred responsibility to look out for God's children, and whatever your issues are, you need to put them, leave them outside the door. When you come to negotiate, to meet, and to deliberate and plan, you need to do that in unison, and put the children first. Because as Brother said, at the end of your term, there will be elections, and UBC will be engaged from here out. Not, you know, we took the criticism and said, "You trying to run stuff?" No, we've never tried to run anything. What we tried to do was put people in position to look out for our children, and when they don't, then we have to do something about that. So I want you to know, as Brother said, we're watching, we're praying for you, that you will look out for our children, because again, remember it now, it's a sacred responsibility. You have the lives of God's children in your hands, and you will be judged. Thank you, and I wish you all the best, praying for you, that our community and our education system will be all that it can be under your supervision and guidance. Thank you. Oh, Larry Sproul. When was he? Pastor Brother, you did what? He was? I missed that. Okay, three. Three, I missed Dr. Sproul. Thank you, man.
Pastor Pogue?
Is he? Okay.
Peggy Altman?
As one of the prior speakers said, we are accountable to the voters, and when we had the election over the budget, initially it was, we're not going to vote for the budget, we need an audit. Then I get a robo-call the night before the election saying that the Board agreed to get an audit done. So I guess my question is, who's been contracted to do the audit, and when is the result going to be made public?
We are, should I answer? Okay, the Board is discussing audits tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
We are going to be discussing audits tonight.
Warren Mitchell?
Couple things, I'm gonna try and be fast as possible. CICA proposals are still going on, I know, we're all aware of that. I'm here again to remind us all, not just that our CICA people are extremely important, that they should be treated fairly. When you guys go in that room and you discuss who's getting what, and we push back, and, but I want to remind you all, something that you may not know is that when their committees request data, they'll look back at prior years so they can review what the proposals were, what was agreed, what was not, they should be getting that information as soon as they ask for it. It shouldn't have to be left aside or, you know, held up or delayed. They need that so that they can negotiate properly. Their committees and their leaders are the ones who should be, normally would be requesting this data. You should be pressing to make sure that the people who provide that data are getting that data to those folks so that they can review properly and they can come back with educated proposals, negotiations. Speaking along the lines of fairness, we have safety agents, safety agents in our buildings that, as far as my understanding, and this is a question, every safety agent, security agent in our buildings is supposed to be fingerprinted and certified by the state, according to my understanding. And I'm questioning now, what buildings have security agents that are not fingerprinted and certified by the state right now? Because if something were to happen tomorrow in one of those buildings where those safety agents that are uncertified or un-fingerprinted, what type of money are we stashed away for the lawsuits? Okay, we need to be thinking about that. So all of you there in those seats, make sure you, that is something that you want to definitely think about. Do we have, are you chasing to make sure that we're buttoned up? And speaking of security and fairness, again, I'm going to say this, I don't care what your title is in this district, if you work in this district, no matter what it is, do not wear your title as if that's some reason to talk to people and treat people in a fashion that is unbecoming. We're not disrespect people because they wear the same uniform as 15 other people in these buildings. Their lives are on the line every single day so that the rest of the folks who make six figures and better can come to school and feel safe, so that our babies can come to school and feel safe. So I hope that these things are being thought about and you keeping that in the forefront, because everybody that is of supervisory status or whatever it is, you're talking to people who have feelings. If you were to see them in the street and stop and shop off hour, are you thinking about what you said to them when they were in your office, or they were talking to you and you were talking to them as if they were less than what they are? And that goes from the director's level to whoever, I don't care what your position is, do not abuse your power. All right? And again, and speaking, I don't want to, not going to take any thunder away from Bishop and, from Bishop, but yeah, you are given an opportunity, you have a, we charge you with being responsible, and doing what you're supposed to do to make sure that the decisions you make in those seats are actually, you know that you're affecting the babies first, not the person next to you. Not the person that's telling you, "Well, look here, we shouldn't do this and we shouldn't do that." No, think about the people who are actually being affected. None of you are being affected by the decisions you make. Those of us sitting out here are affected by the decisions that you make, more than anybody. Okay, so I sit in here, look at all these gentlemen from this football team, at least one of which I coached on T-ball when he was about five years old, and he was shorter than me, and now he's taller than me, but I'm glad to see him and the rest of you guys in here doing their thing, the mighty Mount Vernon football team. I love to see it. And I hope that if I, when I come back in here the next time, and you're going to see me again, right, because we're going to talk about some more things, like fire alarms in the buildings, and which buildings have full fire safety and up to snuff, and how many of those buildings are not up to snuff still yet. When the state came in in June and did a, I walked through, and they told us which buildings did not, were not up to snuff on fire safety. I don't see my, my man, Mrs. Silver here right now would ask him the question, but we need to have these buildings up to snuff, and we should be definitely not spending excess money to have people watch the buildings so they don't burn down, because we don't have fire safety equipment in place in these buildings. And if I'm not mistaken, three people retired from the Board. They resigned from the Board. Three. And four, hold on, I'm sorry, the other person refused her seat. The other person refused her seat. Okay? Make sure that that speaks great volumes. Three people who served this Board strong and had nothing but our babies and teachers in mind and in their heart resigned. Why? That's the question. Yes, I know, I know, I like it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
My name is Cynthia Turnquist Jones. I reside at 444 Seneca Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. So this morning I'm here to, no, this morning, that's how long I've been up. So this evening I am here because of the library at Williams Elementary School. So what is the library does? It creates an atmosphere of learning, but what do individuals who know about libraries and its function, other than checking out books, is a place of research. Everyone who has a degree had to go to a library and do research, so why wait until they get to college and start with their, their young? I had the pleasure of visiting Trappagan Elementary School Library, and it was one of the best libraries that I've seen here in Mount Vernon, because whoever sat down and thought about how they were creating this library, they thought about the children, they thought about the parents that they went home to, and they also thought about the staff. That is something that we want to do here at Williams Elementary School. You see, right now, there are a plethora of individuals who are out there who are creating these lists, and they're saying that if you are teaching about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., if you are teaching about Frederick Douglass, that you will be fired and you will be fined in particular states. But here in Mount Vernon, that is not happening. They have books that are on a banned list, books like Charlotte Web, Brown Bear, Brown Bear, as well as The Giving Tree by Shel Silverstein. But we're not doing that here at Mount Vernon. When you walk into Trappagan Library, you see those books on the shelves, so those little hands, those little black hands, little brown hands, are able to pick that book up off the shelf. Now, the library has to run with a certain kind of money. I spoke to Dr. Bennet Conroy, and everyone in here should know, and if you don't know, now you know, that she is a beast when it comes to writing grants. Children are allocated $6.25 every year for books in the library. We have a couple of principals that are in the house, they already know that struggle. That means that if there's about 300 students in the lot, in the school, they only get 1,875 books. The average book cost is $16.99, which equates to only 111 books for that school year. The average amount of books that is needed in a school library is 10,000 to 15,000 books, which is roughly $245,000. We are not there yet at Williams Elementary School, but we will be there, because I spoke to Dr. Bennet Conroy, as well as the Black Political Westchester Women of Mount Vernon, as well as the Youth Bureau, because we know that our children deserve to be in the race. So the desire is to make sure that our scores increase by 35%, and that is when there is a library that is up and running. It is the one thing that we fought for when we were slaves, was to be able to read a book. We should not be fighting for that right now in 2022. So I am asking, and I am making sure that everybody have on record, that we will do it one book at a time, and we're going to start with Williams Elementary School. Once again, I bid you black power and black peace.
My name is Mark Suckey. I had a lot to say, but starting with Mr. Edwards, who brought it straight down, they said everything that needed to be said this evening regarding a rumor, but I'm not going to go there. I'd just like to say to the football team, well done. Well done. You did a good job. I hope I have one up here as well, you know, because these trophies look really good. To the young people, you may not know, but you are amongst wealth. You are amongst greatness. Tonight we have Finita Ruth Hassel Thompson in our presence. She's the one, one of those who make it possible for Mount Vernon to have what they need to have. She's been on the front line for a very long time. Ever since I was a little child, she was out there, and I would like to say to her, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant. Well done." So tonight, let's put the rumors to bed, you know, and we opened up this year in a good note, a positive note. Everyone who I spoke to, from teachers to students, why I'm saying, this is one of the first times in a long time, we walked into our buildings and felt comfortable. Now, to say that, that means the dynamics was changed. The leadership that we have has put everything that she has into make that shift. She been, as has been said, on the front line for a very, very long time, doing things that no one have seen quietly, and to have allegations thrown on the table is incorrect. There's an old saying, and I can be wrong with these words, don't read, don't believe all you see in half of what you hear. For what you're seeing is not true, and what you're hearing is false. It's not true. So let's move on, the way we're moving, in the positive note, let's close out this year on top, okay? Let's bring Mount Vernon the way it used to be, with pride, back, much stronger. Dr. B.C., you're doing a fabulous job, and I will stand behind you, and I won't say it quietly, to back you up, to be there for you. I will not fight you, as you know, I will stand with you. And if somebody starts to throw blows, I'm coming to the front line. Be blessed, each and every one of you Board members, and read. Whatever you do, read. I had two women when I was on this Board, Carol Ben Ruben and Lynn McBride, always wind up saying to me, "Read." And I was like, "What are you talking about? Read." Until I got to the point, it's tired of hearing them, I was reading. I ain't the world's greatest reader, and I took my time, and I started reading very carefully, and then I saw the picture. So read, read, and everything will fall into place. Be blessed.
That concludes public comments.
As long as you don't say anything out of line, you're welcome. Come on, Mr. Keller. You know how you do.
Well, in the duty of your office, we want to call the meeting next month. Thomas Keller, 12 Pasadena Place. I'm disappointed that Ruth Thompson didn't run for reelection in 2016. Now we have a senator from the Bronx who Mount Vernon represents about one quarter or one third. You're from Mount Vernon. I wish you were still in the Senate, like Gary Prentle. Anyway, this was fixed a few years ago. There's huge potholes as you're driving in the parking lot. Can't we get it fixed? It was one pothole fixed a few years ago, it was a huge one, when Leslie Zamora was the president. I was at the mayor's meeting this morning, the huge potholes on McQueston Parkway, the one on Prospect and North Columbus, hopefully they'll get to that. Anyway, congratulations for opening up the athletic field. I was told it wasn't going to be open. It's now open on weekends, and the period is short because the days are getting shorter, but I guess it's open after students do their athletic activities during the week. So, Lorna, thank you for opening up, pushing on that. I walked over the field this Saturday. Beautiful tennis courts, resurfaced a few years ago, they're like brand new. Anybody plays tennis? Go play tennis on the weekends. Didn't we have lights that worked, the athletic fields? I remember a few years ago, there were walks on, in June, Walk for Cancer, Richard Thomas had fireworks over there, and I think the lights worked, but somebody said they're not hooked up to Con Ed. Can we get the lights? You can have events over there. So please get the, please turn on the lights. Now, in terms of homegrown, I'm not sure what you mean by homegrown. Certainly Brenda Smith was homegrown, but she moved to White Plains in 83 after her husband lost the race for mayor. If you say the superintendent is homegrown, yeah, if you count New Rochelle as Mount Vernon, she's worked for the district for 20 years, but she hasn't lived here. Finally, I don't have my calendar with me. Unfortunately, I left it at home, but the school district had off yesterday, Monday, the 10th, and I looked on the calendar and it said... And I looked on the calendar and it said Indigenous Peoples' Day. Who is responsible for this? Approving this calendar with Indigenous Peoples' Day? That's a phrase. It's a phrase. It's a bumper sticker. It's a thought. It's something that people, some people want. But the only federal holiday is Columbus Day. How outrageous that we have yesterday off for Indigenous Peoples' Day, which has no, uh, it's not legal.
Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller.
Some other time. Don't interrupt me. I didn't interrupt you. Don't interrupt me.
Mr. Keller, please.
Okay.
Please, you have 20 seconds, please. Mr. Keller.
Yes?
Please finish, finish what you have to say.
Okay, I have eight seconds left.
Please don't be disrespectful, please.
I'm not being disrespectful. They're being disrespectful to me. Anyway, when we approve the next year's calendar, I want it Columbus Day, not Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
That concludes public speaking. Thank you all. Hello? The board is aware of certain recent allegations that have been made regarding one of these vendors. And it will, and it will take all necessary steps to review the matter with the appropriate parties, including the council. We will continue to update the community on this matter in the extent necessary and legally appropriate. So we have the superintendent's report. I don't really need to celebrate my people. I don't need to sit behind a desk to do that. I'd rather come in person and celebrate with my young men. But before I do that, in, on July 1st, when I assumed the job as superintendent, there's a little voice in my head that keeps coming back. And that voice said to me, because I had so many issues and so many problems, the little voice said, stay strong, be ready. The fight is not yours. I will deliver your tomorrow. So I know my tomorrow will be delivered. And it will be delivered by the work that I'm going to do, the work that I have done and the support and the love that people have for our scholars. I want to say though, that when it comes to our scholars, we have to learn to celebrate them. And we do not have to wait until they've finished their journey to celebrate them. We have to encourage them as they are on their journey. For example, last week, we have 75 students who were registered in the Smart Scholars Program, who registered for at least four courses in college. At the end of their senior year, they will be leaving with at least 60 college credits. Now, all the people who have been writing and blogging, could you just write about that, please? Because that what we do, we celebrate our scholars. And yes, I live in New Rochelle. But I fight for all my kids in Mount Vernon. And I will challenge anyone out there when it comes to providing resources and funds for my scholars. Let's put it out there. It doesn't matter if you try to muddy the water, because you know what? The truth always prevails. And I'm not going to stop. I'm going to keep going. As long as I have the support of the community, I'm definitely going to do my best for our kids. And thank to those who always support me. And thanks to those who don't. Because you know what? You will come around. With that being said, I want to congratulate my football players. I know you have been here for quite a long time. And the reason why I want to thank them, I want to encourage them. I know the season is not over and it's up and down. You win some, you lose some. But what I want to say to you, I want to encourage you to continue to focus on your academics, focus on your sports and be a role model for others. I watched you play on that field and you played your heart out. I went into that locker room and I spoke with you and you could just see the energy coming out of you because you want to go there and win that game. And I was really proud of you. And I decided that I'm not going to wait until the end of the season to tell you how much we appreciate you. We are going to do it tonight. So ladies and gentlemen, please give it up for our football players. So I have here with me Madam President, and we are going to give out these little trophies. So if you don't get one at the end of the year, just remember that we still appreciate you. Anyway, your time will come. So with that being said, I'm going to call out the names of the team. And my parent names, as usual, will come and will pass it to you, Madam President. But before I do that, the board, the trustees, do you want to say a word to the, to our young men? Oh, you're a player too.
Hello, everybody. My name is Orville Gale. New trustee, just got on in July. And I want to say, I along with Dr. B.C., was at your game memorial. I'm also a former athlete. So I know what it takes to do both your schoolwork and your athletic. It's very difficult. But you guys show and show to the community and to the young ones coming up that it can be done. Okay, so we just want to keep your head up, keep pushing forward and do the best you can. But always remember, your academics come first. Okay, so take care of your academics. Everything else will follow. So congratulations again and good job. And we'll see you the best for the rest of the year.
How you doing, fellas? My name is Jeff Fred. I went to all the schools in Mount Vernon. And Mount Vernon, at the time we were going to school, we were big in basketball. You know, we had Scooter McCray, Rodney McCray, Gus Ray. But this football team this year looks like it's going to take us a long way. So I just want to tell you guys to keep your head up, stay focused. Like my mother used to say to me, stay in them books and make sure that y'all bring the championship back home. Thank you.
Any other trustees would like to say something?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lorna Kerwin. And I also want to echo that you guys make us really proud. It was such a great, great game when you guys were playing Yonkers. And I know how you guys felt. I felt it for you, like you were my child. So I just want to encourage you, as trustee Oval says, stay in your books and play hard. You guys could do it because you could win the championship. And who knows, we will see you sign in one day with the football teams, the national football teams. So congratulations and be well. Thank you.
I don't know much to say after that. Thank you guys for putting it out there. But you guys did an excellent job back when you played Yonkers at the new field. So congratulations on that win. Good luck. And we'll see you at the championships. We know that, right? Just put it out there, okay? All right, just put it out there in the universe.
So because we don't want you to take a long time, I'm going to ask you to just stand up in your seat when I call your name and we'll take the trophy to you because it's going to take a long time for you to come up. But before I do that, we forgot to, I forgot to share a piece of good news with you. And that Coach Semino, on Friday, September 30th, traveled to Courtland University to the Basketball Coaches Association of New York Coaching Clinic. He proudly received the 2022 New York State Coach of the Year Award. So, Coach Semino. Sorry, Coach, I know you didn't want me to do this, but I have to shout you out. Okay, all right. So let's get to the kids now. So the first person is Edward Ababio. They're not in order. Okay, so I'll call from here instead. Roberto Hernandez. Jaden McCray. Kajai Francoi. Dejan Samuels. Norman Alston. Javelin Tracy. King Mercer. Nazir John. Amir Yishak. Adrian Ochoa. Eric Peterson. Deshaun Terry. Jaden Jones. Kevin Richardson. Jaden Dempsey. Edward Ababio, Babio. Jared Collins. Kial Wong. Jaden Hamilton. Jaden Hamilton. Isaiah Dede. Courtney Brown. Bashir Odindo. Levon Lathan. Javale Foster. Romaria Dwar. Isaiah Mingo. Tyde Lee. Jemai James. Jemai James. Okay. Xavier Vassal. Dwight Fingling. Frashawn Boyd. Hold on. Yahshua Mohammed. There's a blank one there for Mohammed. Mohammed. Yes. And then we'll go to the coaches. You have Jared Dandy. Coombs Condell Hamilton. Mr. Mark Murray. And of course, the Honorable Bob Semino. We have come to the end of this time report. So I want you to, I want all the young men to stand and let us give them a big round of applause. Thank, thank you guys for coming. But Mr. Murray, will you, do you want to say something? We have the boxes for your, for your gifts. So the boxes are outside there. Okay.
I just want to say thank you for the Mount Vernon community for supporting us. Memorial Field Game was a big, big, big impact for our city, not just for these young men, but for our city. And we just want to do it again the next time we are there. All right, thank you for everything. We appreciate it all.
So we have a presentation tonight? Yes. Yes, we do have a presentation by Dr. Monica George-Fries and its Unbalanced Literacy. So we just wanted to educate the folks who do not know what balanced literacy is so that we can keep moving forward in educating our kids. Dr. George-Fries?
Good evening, everyone. It's, it's good. I can, I can see. I have it on my phone. Thank you. I'm happy to be here, board, president, superintendent. Thank you for inviting me to, and I'll let the students go. I know they need to get up early tomorrow. All this celebration that's going on. They need to go do their homework. Don't forget to do your homework. I'm good. I can, I can see. You want me to turn it on? So I am just going to take a few minutes and go over the Balanced Literacy Program that you have here in the district. The clicker is not working. Okay, there you go. Thank you. So first, I'd like to tell you who Reach Educational Solutions is. We are a consulting firm that supports many, many districts throughout the United States. Our goal, unapologetically, is to work with districts and schools that have mostly minority students, Black, Latino, minority students who are living at or below the poverty line, to help them with their school improvement efforts. That's the work that I did as an educator for 35 years and that's the work that I continue to do. That's the work that I did as an educator for 35 years and that's the work that I continue to do. We have worked in Mount Vernon for several years now, about eight years. And prior to that, I worked with Mount Vernon School District around the state improvement work that they had come down on them or at least imposed on the district by the New York State Education Department. The services that we've provided in this district, of course, it's the school improvement work that I created actually at the New York State Education Department. We've also, we were the authors of the Leadership Bench Program for P-20. And that program actually led to 13 teachers who received their administrative certification through a grant from New York State Education Department. We worked with the district as well around the literacy development efforts. And we've been doing that since 2014. It is not our initiative or our work that only led to the improvements in literacy, but I would like to hope to think that it's our partnership with the district and our professional development that we've provided, not only for school administrators, but also for teachers in this district that led to the district increasing their ELA scores by 33 percentage points from 2014 to 2021, which I'll show you in a minute. During the pandemic and during the time that we were all virtual, we also co-facilitated and arranged for the district to receive equity training, particularly around the book All Students Must Thrive, which was facilitated by Dr. Tyrone Howard from UCLA, who works with Reach often. And in the other two programs, Dr. Bennett Conroy talked about the Early College Initiative, where just last week, 75 students in Mount Vernon registered for courses, college courses, where they will receive college credits. They are receiving anywhere from 12 credits this school year to some students and some schools will be receiving 16 credits this school year, all to go towards their four-year degree and will help them and their families financially. And it will help accelerate their college career and experience and certainly prepare them to be successful. And finally, we've been working with you for the past couple of years around engaging families and community-based organizations. I'm not sure why. Thank you. Okay. So as I said a little, a few moments ago, that the district has experienced a great increase around their ELA scores. And this is particularly what I'm here to talk to you about. In 2014, when we first started working with the district, the students were reading proficiency levels at or above grade level was just 12%. That is just about one out of 10 students. Over time, with the materials that were purchased for the district and providing professional development in the materials that they have and also other strategies and practices and ways to use those materials, the ELA scores and of course, with the administrators leading the way and teachers working really hard and long around their lesson plans and what they were bringing to students, the district has experienced a huge 35, as you can see, 35 percentage point gain from 12% to 2021, 47%. You'll notice that 2019 and 2020 school scores are not there because of the pandemic and what the state did with the state test. So I want to talk to you a bit about the trajectory of how the district got here. Balanced literacy is not just one approach. It allows the district, it allows schools and teachers to look at all ways that students acquire literacy. There is no one program that's the panacea for how students learn to read that's going to cure any student who is reading below grade level. If that was the case, we wouldn't have so many struggling students in literacy. You have to look at it in a balanced way. And I'm happy and proud to partner with Mount Vernon in that approach. The balanced approach that Mount Vernon City School District is taking is to ensure that the four components, phonics and phonemic awareness, is being provided to students through the Foundations Program. Also, every teacher in their classroom has a dedicated RTI or Response to Intervention slash, I like to add, enrichment, so that any students who need additional support can receive that during their time. The difference with the balanced literacy is that it's not embedding RTI or phonics and phonemic awareness into the reading period. Reading is separate so that students have the opportunity to read books and so is writing. And so the four components is all leading up to students having a high level of independence. We've taken this journey and, and it's a multi-step. It cannot, you cannot cure something that happened over a long period of time with one full swoop. It takes time. You have thousands of students here in Mount Vernon School District and you have to think methodically. You have to consider the teachers who are standing in front of the students and the administrators who are supporting those teachers. And so over time, we've taken step by step to get to this point that the school district is at this year, which is to ensure that every student has an opportunity to actually have authentic reading books along with the journeys books. So there's not like that, that program has been thrown out the window. We don't throw away the baby with the bathwater. So that they have extended opportunities to read and what we call have eyes on text. The only way to improve in literacy is to read and to write. You have to do both. And so if you just use the basal program by itself, it doesn't have that dedicated time because everything is encapsulated in one lesson. And so the district has learned to parse that out. And it has taken time to win teachers over, to teach them how to do that and to teach them the value of a balanced literacy approach. Our current work in the district, to just to go back, is to continue the school improvement work, is to continue the long-term goals and work that we had already established years ago for literacy develop is also development, is also to continue the family and engagement work. Naturally, since we wrote the grant for the Early College Program, we're continuing those efforts. Though although only 75 students registered for college credit last week, you actually have 150 students involved in the program. Every year for three years, another cohort will be added. At the end of the program, you'll have 225 students, 75 students from each of your high schools receiving college credits up to 60 college credits, which could be an associate's degree for many of those students. And then the last thing that we'll be doing is the special ed work. There is. Okay. I just want to take one minute and tell you the difference between the basal reading and focusing on basal reading and having students have the opportunity to use and read authentic books. I heard someone earlier, just a few minutes ago, come up here and talk about the libraries and the importance of the books in the library. And that is so true. And that's something that the reading and the writing workshop will allow students to be able to do. The problem with basal readers, and not all basal readers are, they're not evil, they're not bad. But like I said, no program is the panacea for solving a literacy issue in any school district or any school. You have to look at the whole picture and create your goals of what it is that you want to do and then create the program that you need to address the students who are in front of you. But the basal reader in general does not lend itself to students who are struggling readers because basals are written on a particular reading level. So I showed you that the district has 47% students reading at or above grade level. Let's just say generously that that is an even number percentage going across all of your, your classes in Mount Vernon. That would mean that about approximately 53% or half of the students in every classroom is not reading on grade level. They may be reading approaching, they may be further behind, but they're not reading on grade level. The concern with that is how do those students have access to the text and the stories in a basal if it's written above their reading level? What do you do to address that? And if that's the only thing that they have available to them and the only thing that a teacher is using to teach literacy, you're going to have a problem. And this is why many districts that use basals usually cap off at about 30 to 40% proficiency rates. And then they realize that they have to put authentic books in front of children in order for them to A, develop a love for reading. And I would hope that that's our goal for our black and brown students and for any student that's enrolled in Mount Vernon, that we want to develop a love of literacy in their hearts and in their minds so that they are reading, reading, reading. The other problem is that it, it has a cyclical approach, which means that it doesn't stay in one genre. It doesn't stay in realistic fiction. It doesn't stay in fantasy. It doesn't stay in biography for any long period of time. A student could be reading a biography story today and then tomorrow they'll go into class and they're reading fantasy. They're reading about the Wizard of Oz. And then the following day, they can be reading autobiography. And then the following day, they're reading a poem. It doesn't stay within a genre for any long period for students to be able to indepthly develop their understandings and their strategies within a particular area. Using a balanced literacy approach will do that. I'm not going to read the slides because we all can read and so you'll be able to see these points. Again, is only reader's workshop or writer's workshop good enough to move students across the spectrum of reading? No, that's why you need a balanced approach. The balanced approach in Mount Vernon is to ensure that you have a dedicated period for phonics and phonemic awareness in the lower grade and word works, what we call word works, in the upper grades. We don't abandon it just because they're in upper grades. They work on vocabulary, they work on prefixes and suffixes and other things that you would not work on in with phonics and phonemic awareness. And then you also in this district have the RTI dedicated period so that teachers can use that time to work with small groups of students who need that work based on their eye-ready assessments. And so I'm going to stop there and say that's my presentation to you on balanced literacy. If you have any questions, Dr. Bennett Conroy asked me to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
How long have you been in the district?
Since 2014.
So, so you've been here since 2014. I know there was a slide, I guess, with COVID and you said we're at 47 or 33%.
My, my clicker is, I'm trying to go back to that slide. Can you go back to the chart?
We're at 33%.
When, in 2014, the district was at 12% proficiency rate. I, what I said is that in that slide, you will not see the two years during COVID because the first year, the state did not administer the reading exams. And then the second year, very few students in any district in the state took the exam for it to be counted. So those two years are missing.
So we only went up 20% in eight years? 47%?
You're at 47%. That's 35 percentage points.
She said 33% for 2021.
It's 35%. You started from 12 and now it's 47%, 35, which is huge. That's, I mean, it may not sound like that's a big percentage, but when you're talking about thousands of students, that's a huge, that's a huge increase to go from 12 to 47%. The, the question and the hard work is how do you get beyond that? And you can't get beyond that if you only put in front of students the other 53% of the kids, readers that they can't access. You have to have libraries. You have to have these authentic books in classrooms for students to be able to access. And then their teachers should be using the grade level text for instruction so that students have availability of their grade level text as well as their, their reading level text to read independently.
How does this impact the non-native speaking English, like reading?
So for English language learners, that's what you're asking, right? For English language learners, we also know that it takes between three and five years to acquire language proficient, proficiently. And so there are four domains for ELLs, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Again, if a English language learner has a book that not only they can't access because of their language, their dominant language is not within that book, they also won't be able to access it if they're not reading, if their, that domain is not at their grade level. Students who come to any country acquiring and having proficiency in any language, they have an advantage actually of acquiring a second language. However, it has to be nurtured. And so the way to do that is to be able to give them books and provide books for them in their native language. You're not going to be able to have a class where a teacher is teaching mainly in English and have a, have a class that's dominant in English and then have a basal in English and a basal in Spanish. Either those students will have to be in a bilingual class, which does not expedite the acquisition of language, or you can have authentic literature that's written in their home language so that they can access it. Another question that came up here today was the culturally relevant work that needs to happen in the district. You're only going to get excerpts and parts of stories in a basal. A basal can only be so many pages long. But if you have thousands of books available for a child to be able to select to read from, it is more likely that the people, the characters, the setting, the, the issues in the books will resemble who they are and what they understand. As fast as I can acquire what's going on in the story, I will be able to, to read that story and increase my literacy rate.
Do you have a list of those books? An example of the list of books that you're using for like the elementary school age children?
Yes, the, the Dr. Bennett Conroy has a list of Scholastic books, titles that, that are in every.
Is it only Scholastic? Is that the only?
No, we, you have, you all, not we, you all, you have Scholastics. We're still using the stories and journeys. We're using the other resources that teachers have had. And with, that's the beauty of balanced literacy, right? As long as it's a book, you can use it. The teachers are using books from short books or small books that they've had from programs from years ago. And I've said, don't discard those books. Let's sort them out, let's level them and let's organize them in baskets so that students can shop for those books as well. So you have a plethora of titles in this district as well as teachers having like grade level licenses to reading A through Z, which gives students just an extensive library for them to go on and, and select books from A to Z.
Sure. Could I speak? Yeah, let me ask you a question. Are we introducing this program to the parents as well?
We did professional, well, I won't say professional development, but, but a workshop for parents, but we certainly can. And I encourage that. I think that, and, and your parent liaise, when they have meetings with parents, I know that they talk to parents about literacy, but I absolutely think that. that they talk to parents about literacy, but I absolutely think that the parents need to understand how important it is for students to read at home and for students to have books accessible to them at home. And if they don't have it in their homes, that they should be taking them to the library and how to respect the books that are going home from the schools so that they can return for the following students in the following year. My pride and joy was when a parent came to me when I was a principal and said to me in the lobby of my own school, you know, I think my daughter may need to repeat the grade. And I was like, why? Why are you saying that? Just because she's only reading on Level J and she needs to get with it. And that just showed me that now I have a parent who actually knows as much as what we've been teaching teachers and saying to students. So I absolutely think that if you can get parents as partners in this world, your literacy rate will also increase in that area as well.
And one more question.
What I also want to add, I'm trustee, I'm red, is that this summer, we start sending home a series of books with the students to go home. So each student has five books that they take home. And over the summer, you have people who are reading these books at different locations. For example, you have Cynthia Turnquest who read to her kids in, is it the library, Ms. Turnquest? Right, at school in the church with those, with some of those books. So every summer, you know, as long as I'm around, they would be getting books to take home that they could build their collection.
And this is for every student in Mount Vernon, especially everybody, correct?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. You need the special education students to have access to books that they are reading, that they can read so that you can accelerate their reading level as well.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Does your program provide for?
I don't have a program. Does the district balanced literacy program?
literacy program provide for ongoing professional development for teachers? I'm thinking of just new teachers who really need that kind of support.
Not only new teachers, but teachers who have been teaching for 1,000 years need professional development. I have to tell you, I led a school of 1,800 students. It did not take overnight to get to, from that 9% proficiency rate that I entered that school in to the 90 proficiency rate that I exited that school in. And so it takes a long time to get every teacher to understand. Just because you're a teacher with certification does not mean that you know how to teach reading. And so professional development is paramount to ensure that they understand all of the nuances in reading. I always say, and when I read, when I worked with John King, who was commissioner, you can't expect the teacher to teach Invisible Man if they've never read Invisible Man. And then when they read Invisible Man, they don't understand Invisible Man. So we have to ensure that our teachers become prolific readers. We have to ensure that our teachers understand the structure of text, and we have to, we have to ensure that they understand that this is a non-negotiable. Every child in Mount Vernon needs to leave this district at a high level of proficiency. It is unacceptable to have one out of 10 or five out of 10 students walking out of this district not at proficiency rate.
Just a question, is the district's balanced literacy program, what's the difference between that and a whole language approach? Is it the same?
It, it's not as quite as the same as the whole language approach. A whole language approach has a little bit of nuanced differences in that it's more like a literacy-based program, which means that students are introduced to elements of reading and literacy throughout the entire school day. Ultimately, I think that's where you need to be at a literacy base. So during social studies and during science and during math, students are introduced to how those subjects also align to literacy. But you got to take one chunk at a time. So whole language is a little bit more spread out throughout the day, and balanced literacy has distinct time periods where you do all four areas: phonics, phonemic awareness, response to intervention, reading, and then writing.
And, and how does, how does either the whole approach, well, let's go with the balanced approach, the balanced literacy, how does that compare to the more traditional, just, I would say rigid probably what I learned, study of phonics? And I'll probably pronounce it wrong because I wasn't the beta, but phonemic?
Phonemic awareness.
Phonemic awareness, there you go.
Remember, so in, in Mount Vernon, you've adopted foundations, right? Which is an Orton Gillingham program, which is, Orton Gillingham is the best. So when you get to phonics and phonemic awareness, you cannot get any better than Orton Gillingham programs. And so you've already adopted a program that has that embedded into it. So you're using foundations, and that's a 25 to 30-minute period for early childhood. And then as children get older into second and third grade and other things like that, then other grades, you move to, shift to about 15, 20 minutes of that every day. So they're getting that every day. Then you also have your response to intervention. So when you have your assessments, which the district administered in September, you don't want to just administer assessments and don't do anything with it. That's having data for data's sake. You have to have data that you're responding to. So having the response to intervention, you know, I could talk about this all day, but no, I can't. But having response to intervention will allow you to use that data from the I-Ready assessments that you had teachers take the time out and administer in September. So teachers can group students according to that data and provide skills, which is not always embedded in a, in a routine way in programs.
And just a question, how does our, I just, I did some research on it. So how does our program, the district's program, compare or is it similar to, I know there was a program developed at Columbia by Lucy Culkin. Is that ours similar, the same, something different?
So Lucy, I worked with Lucy in the, in the late 80s and early 90s when she first wrote Writer's Workshop. Reader's Workshop did not even exist at that time. The goal for Writer's Workshop was to have students become authors of genres so that when they read that, they're able to understand it. The difference between TC, which is why we don't say that Mount Vernon is doing TC, which is Teachers College, we call it TC, is that TC is strictly reading and writing workshops. Again, you have two additional components. So when you're doing TC, phonics, phonemic awareness and phonics is embedded in the reading workshop, and you have other strategies that you would use that embeds the RTI into writing or into reading. But Mount Vernon is taking a balanced approach. So you can have TC, which is the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. That's the name of it. It's just reading and writing. And in latter years, Lucy adopted phonics and did some word work work, but that's not what they do. They do readers and writers. Mount Vernon is not doing TC. Mount Vernon is doing literacy the Mount Vernon way, considering the students in Mount Vernon. You need to have a dedicated phonics and phonemic awareness period, and you need to have a dedicated RTI period because you are at 47%. Applause to the 47%, but we know we're not there. Does that answer your question?
I had a, I had a question for Dr. Bennett Conroy. How many book clubs or poetry clubs are in the district for like after school? Do they have that type of thing here?
Not many, not many. And it's something that we have to bring back. A lot of the schools have been asking for it, especially the high schools. But the, the K through 8, one or two of them might just have it, but not many. And that is something that we need to promote.
Embedded in a Reader's Workshop, however, the units of study, you have book clubs. And embedded in the, the reading units of study, you also have poetry.
I'm sorry, I want to give Ruth Hassel some water.
You need water?
Some water.
Any other questions?
Just one more question from me. How many in, within our districts, how many, how many program, excuse me, how many, I don't know if you'd call them consultants, teachers, teacher consultants are provided to our district from the organization we represent?
We've had different numbers over the years. This year, there are four of us dedicated to the, to the K-8 schools that are implementing the entire literacy block and all four components.
Is that enough?
Well, no, but that's what you have. And we make it do what it do. Okay, because failure is not an option.
Any more questions? I just wanted to ask, is this a grant? Do you get grants or this is funded by the district?
I will let that financial question be answered by the board because I don't know your finances. I don't work for Mount Vernon, so I won't dare answer any financial question.
No, it's for, it's a combination of both. It's from grants and it's from Title I, not from general funds.
Any other questions? I think that's it. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Monica George.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It was a pleasure to be here.
Thank you for your time. So we're going to go right into committee reports. I will start with Mr. Gale. Anything from you?
Well, we met the family and community engagement. We met last week with Dr. Conroy. And as an introduction, so we had an introduction. We've not had a substantive meeting yet, but we'll be looking to do some things this month and early next month with the community. Soon as we get more information, I'll make sure the community gets, gets that information.
Okay. And I know trustee Helene and trustee Adesobi are with me with special education. So I just want to remind everybody that we're having a special education, CIOC, Special Education Advisory Meeting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at Rebecca Turner Elementary School. And also, please remember to come to the Special Education PTA meeting on November 10th at Benjamin Turner at 10:30. That's where we go into, we need at least 15 interested people, so please come. So, and we have, and we're going to talk about IEPs, how to read them. We're going to have handouts, if you can have handouts for that. So that's with the Special Education Committee with trustee Helene and trustee Gloria, unless they have other committees that they want to report on. I think trustee Gloria has one.
I just want to report on the project that we're working on to bring the robotics program into our district. We have many children who are really interested in it, and we met with Lisa and, and right now, we're just trying to secure a partnership with Iona College. So we're really excited about that. Apparently, there's a room available at the high school, but it just needs to be organized and some of the equipment and the materials that are there need to be, you know, either auctioned off or put aside or whatever. So we have a designated place, and we have the partnership with Iona College that we're working on to secure, and we have some students in mind. And so we're moving forward with that. We're moving forward.
And I don't think we have the committee name for it, but trustee Gloria and trustee Sabina have offered their time for that. So they're going to have another meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sort of the partnership with Iona is the one that I, okay, so that's the one. Okay, great. Yeah. So, yeah, so I'll be able to facilitate that. Okay, great. So I'm going to report.
I told you it was very good.
Well, as of Saturday, when I spoke with them, no one from the district had reached out to, according to Iona, no one from the district had reached out to them yet to set up a.
That's the same, is that the same?
No, I don't think that's the same.
The principal had reached out to them to, at Iona. And they are working on that. And she was, she was here tonight, but she left. I didn't have her speak on it.
But that's different than with the robotics.
Okay, so that's really different.
What do you body's up to? It's a STEAM program?
It's a STEAM program with Iona College. It will be a STEAM program with no expense from, through the district. It's all going to be funded by Iona University. So hopefully that we could get them in here and get started because it's now October.
It's their grant and they include us in it.
Yeah. Yeah, I spoke with them. So hopefully we could get started. Great. Thank you.
So you have something from the policy?
So, yes, so from the policy committee, we met, and we have at least 30 policies that we are working with NISPA to refresh and to get them up to standard. So that's what we started out with, I think about five the last time we met. So we have 25 more policies to get refreshed with NISPA that we are working on. And as far as the budget committee, we have not met within the last two weeks, so we don't have anything to report on the budget committee at this time.
Well, I'm on the security committee, security committee. In the last few weeks, I've met and spoke with the director of security and in separate meetings, and one of the road supervisors went over some of their manpower questions or raised some manpower questions with them and some of their assignments, because I know there's been shifting some people around and just wanted to discuss it with them. Also, because it was brought to me by some members of the community, I spoke to him about assigning guards to kind of walking posts to check areas around the schools that might be a high risk for contraband or possibly weapons making it into the school. So we were discussing those things. And the one thing that was brought up by the road supervisor, because they had attended the game at Memorial Field, was that it would be an excellent idea if the district can find the funds to put another, and also discuss it with the city, to put a repeater for the radios down at the new stadium because we, at the last game, we had 22 guys there, but they, their radios can only talk to each other. They, they're in a hole. They can't actually talk outside of there in case something had to, in case something happened, they can't reach outside of where they are because they're kind of in a whole hole. They need a repeater down there to make it so that it bounces to the rest of the district.
So what's the repeater?
It is exactly what it sounds like. It repeats a signal and sends it and amplifies a signal to somewhere else.
I'm sorry.
It's, if, when I was, I, from my own personal experience, I've been in buildings with a portable radio where there's no signal, and when you're trying to do a job, it is not fun because you have no communication with the outside world. So especially in a symbolic, I won't say it like this because I don't, but a possible symbolic target as a brand-new stadium in Mount Vernon, you definitely need to have your security together. I did, in speaking with him, I spoke with Andrew, and I just also spoke with Mr. Ramirez from Tech, who said he's going to start working on it. So I'm sure he'll be in touch with whomever he has to, to try to get it done.
And I'm also part of the family and community committee, and I didn't make it to the meeting on Friday, but I'll get credit on everything and let you know next meeting.
So Mr. Lindsey, as far as facilities is concerned, trustee Adesobi had said that we were working on trying to remove some equipment from one of the rooms in the high school. Do you know what the status of that is?
I don't have a status of that. Last I heard, they had started to do it, but it kind of hit a standstill.
Do you know who would, who would be responsible for that? Because we need to really move, that's really kind of holding.
I had the conversation, I just ended up having the conversation, but it was initiated by Ken Silver. I had had a conversation earlier in the summer with a Mr. Campbell from, or Campbell, from over at the high school. I also had a couple of conversations with different teachers who used to be the shop teachers as to whether or not we actually should get rid of it, but that's various But that's various conversations.
Can you help us with that?
Yes. As soon as Mr. Silver return, I'm going to ask him the status on that because I know he was seeking out different people to come in and do some auction on it. So as soon as he get back on Monday, I'll follow up on that.
Trustee Lancy, would you help Mr. Silver with that? Would you assist him and oversee?
Absolutely. I'd be very, very happy.
One of the community members brought up an issue with security guards not being fingerprinted.
I'll, I'm.
Does anybody know anything about that?
As I've stated from the get-go on this, I am not a security professional nor a security consultant. I'm just a former cop and former military. No clue, but I will ask because we do have consultants that work for us.
Okay, let me address that. Is that we have the security guards from Riga and they have had their own fingerprint from different company. But we have a policy here in our district through HR that they have to go through a different, a different system. And Morris, you can back me up on that. So we agreed for the safety of everybody and for transparency, we're going to let them go through it again to our system. So they have been, they have gone through our system, they have tested and we are waiting for the result. But they have already been fingerprinted from a different company. So there's nobody in here who is not fingerprinted. It's just that we decided that they have to go through our system.
So that, that question wasn't directed at our guards then? It was directed at the outside?
Riga.
Okay.
Someone told me that and BC took care of it. So I just wanted to make it public. So that was committee reports. Old business, I think Lana brought that up. Any other old business?
I do, Dr. David. I had, I had to put you on the spot, but I had suggested that we include in our curriculum financial literacy. I just wanted to know if you had a chance to speak or to even try to get it implemented. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So we do, we have a career and financial management program. We have currently 260 students across the district that are taking it. And just to give you some topics, because you mentioned something about checking, it focuses on budgeting, money management, credit and loans, investing taxes and taxes and job readiness. And you will also find some of these skills and topics embedded in the economics courses that every 12th grader takes. So we do have it. And it's, it's an elective right now.
It's an elective. So what grade does it start at?
Eighth.
Eighth. And?
Eighth and ninth.
Oh, okay. We were just going to say, so it's not continued all the way to 12?
No.
Is there any way we could get it continued all the way to 12?
I can look into it, look at the state regs and I can look into it and get back to you.
And instead of being an elective, can it be a mandatory course?
First of, first of all, I need to say this before you guys answer. I need to say that we can't find people to even teach that course in the elective. I just want to say that, much less to put it into the curriculum. As a matter of fact, I'm having conversation with the deputy commissioner to see if we can use some other courses instead because kids are losing credit because we can't find teachers to teach that course. So we might be looking towards maybe technology or something else because we just can't find teachers for that.
Okay, so I understand that, but it's important to teach our kids financial literacy.
Oh, sure. I am with you. I just want the teachers.
Okay, because.
Right. I just want the teachers.
Yeah, it's, it's important. Okay.
Right. But in the meantime, I don't want kids to lose out on their credits by not doing, I mean by just sitting down there waiting for a teacher to come in and do career and financial management. So if they can do that and we can find a licensed computer teacher, then we let them go to computers.
Sorry. You were saying some.
So you're saying the mandatory is mandatory in the middle grades, but it's not mandatory in all the grades? So I didn't know if you knew that.
Okay, no, I didn't know that.
Okay, but it is mandatory, but not in all the grades.
Okay. So, so across the board, the middle schools, you're saying the eighth grade, they have been taught that across the board?
If they have a teacher.
If they have a teacher.
Because this, we have certification issues and that's, that's the challenge. So if we can't even manage what we have now, we open it up, we creating a bigger problem.
So we are recruiting for teachers?
Yes.
Are we recruiting for teachers? Okay.
How long have they been, how long has that course been available in seventh grade?
I think eighth and ninth.
So if I may, we were having difficulty finding teachers the past couple of years, but this summer, the state changed the, because there was difficulty finding teachers for it, the state changed who can teach the course. And so now the number of teachers that we have teaching the course has increased. Whereas before it was a specific, a specific license of business and marketing, this state has loosened that.
Okay.
So we do have teachers teaching the course, but from different backgrounds.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I had asked, when do we start teaching it in seventh and eighth grade? Yeah, how long, how long have we been doing that?
We, we started in 2018 when we began to go K-8. The state gave, home economics was a mandatory course for all middle school students. When we decided to go to pre-K-8 buildings, we realized we didn't have a kitchen in every school. And at that time, the state also realized there are no home economics teachers left. So they changed the regulations. And in lieu of offering home economic, school districts can opt to teach career and financial management, which is just learning how to run your household and your home from a different perspective. So when we went K-8, we did it for all students. And similarly, how some of our high school students are getting college credit, when the students take the course in eighth grade, they are earning a half of high school credit, which makes room for them to begin and be able to take these college level courses later on.
Thank you.
That's the guidance, that's the guidance I'm counseling coming out. Because you're not the guidance counselor.
I see.
Yeah, I was at the elementary level, so I couldn't really answer that question. So thank you, Tex.
That's right. That's all right.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so you want to go on to the resolutions? I believe that's where we are.
That's where we are. Okay. Can I have a motion, 6.1, authorize the commencement of a lawsuit against certain vendors? Need a motion?
Against certain vendors? That's 6.1. I think that was just put in today. Okay.
With, just to, just to clarify, those were from, that's the.
From our attorney.
Yes. From the attorney, that's why I wanted to make sure.
That was something that was discussed?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion?
Oh, you, you put a motion out, right? Yep, I did. Lancy and you?
Okay. I second it.
Okay, great. Questions, concerns, discussions?
That's okay.
Yeah.
You can abstain. It's okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Save it.
Read it.
Got it. Can I have a motion for 7.1, authorization to conduct after-school robotics team at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts?
Motion.
Who's that? That is Conroy. And I need a second. Okay.
You have a second?
I got, well. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have, can I have a motion for 7.2, authorization to hire school counselor for the sundown program?
Motion.
Okay.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So this counselor is, works during the day, during the day?
Yeah, right. You're talking to six.
So was, was she the only one that applied?
She took over from Gabby.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.3, authorization to continue the Mount Vernon City School District Mentor Program for new teachers?
Motion.
And that was, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, so there's $1,500 for supplies. What type of supplies?
Things that they use like paper and whatever they use for, for classrooms. You see, this is, this is, this is a grant that is by the teacher center. And we are mandated to put a certain amount of money in there and the teacher center do the rest because of partnership.
Okay.
So that's what this is all about. We can't escape.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.4, appointment of technology links for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Okay, well, these are people who are in the, in the, in the schools who take care of the website in the schools?
So you build a calendar first?
Yes, right. And these, at the time when we put the first resolution, in these people right there. So now they got their folks.
These additional people that have been in some of the building?
No, these schools didn't have any.
So this is new hires?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion for 8.1, human resources?
Motion.
8.1. Question, I need a second.
Second, second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So the backup for these resolutions came under separate, I don't see them.
They're in executive.
They're in here?
They're in executive, right.
They're where?
In executive contact.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
For human resources, what is the vaccination status in the district for employees?
That data was not collected by human resources. It was done under the deputy superintendent at the time that we collected it. I'm not certain because we agreed to maintain confidentiality to the person who collected it and the person in technology who was getting it. So I don't have the full numbers.
Yes, I can answer that. I can't tell you who they are, but what happened, we hired one of our past student who, who is attending Swelman College. She came in, she worked with Nurse Hubert at the high school, and she went through it hand by hand and collect that data. So what I will do, I will reach out to Nurse Hubert. I want, I don't want to say anything until I know exactly the right percentage. And I will share with, with you guys in an email as to how many percentage of our staff has been vaccinated.
Policy for new hires?
New hires in what? No, 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 no. Uh-uh, no, no. Nothing at all.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.2, approval of human resources resolution, non-certified?
Motion.
Okay. And I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Mr. Jenkins, please don't leave. I just want, I just want more to vote on it. Send them.
Okay.
So he heard what he wanted to hear? Is that what it was?
Okay. What happened, because we have some new hires in the audience, but I want you to finish voting on the tab before. But I know he was one of them and he was sneaking out. So I just called him back and just put him on the spot because we want to congratulate him after you guys voted on the tab.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we did. Yes, done. Thank you. Congratulations.
So all the people in the audience, new hires, could you please stand? Welcome, Mr. Jenkins, to the Mount Vernon City School District as one of our new counselors and new hires.
Congratulations. So we're on to 9.1, school improvement authorization. We have a motion for authorization to approve school improvement service memorandum, number S-23-6, dated October 11, 2022.
Motion.
Motion, that's read. And, and you, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So I know we just had a presentation by, by.
Reach.
Reach. But I, I don't know if the board, I'm just putting it out there, I don't know if the board wants to discuss the REACH grant before we vote on it? Or do they want to?
Their resolution is not here.
It's not here.
Yes, it's not their resolution.
We'll do it for next week.
That's, that's Lady of Victory Resolution you're looking at.
This one here, this, the first one?
Yes. All of those are.
Okay. All right.
Then Smile Dental and Catapult is.
Can you tell them what Catapult is?
But Catapult is a company that is hired by Lady of Victory. That's what they use their Title I money for because they are one of our CDOs. So we are entitled to give them a certain amount of money and they can do whatever they want to do with it. We just have to pay the bill for them. So all this, Catapult is Lady of Victory.
Okay.
And Smile Dental is a company that we hired in the district. It's not hired, it's free. It's a free service that they go to the school, the van, and clean people's teeth and all of that stuff. So it's, it's their grant and we partner with them and they take care of our kids. I know kids are dying forward to it because parents start calling out to me and saying they're going to start. So this is just a Smile Dental stuff.
That's something, that's different.
This is not REACH?
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. I, I pull REACH resolutions until you hear the presentation, then we can discuss REACH again and put it back on if you want to put it back on. Because I want transparency, I want you to ask the questions before we put it on. So I, they were there, but because you didn't get a chance to hear the presentation, I want you to look at it and then next, I put it back on at the next meeting after you hear the presentation.
Okay.
But that's why it's not there.
The first one does, the first one in the list is REACH.
Okay.
It's not supposed to be there. There's nothing that's supposed to be there for REACH.
Okay.
Resolution S-23-6.
Yeah, it's there. All right.
Well, nothing is supposed to be there for REACH.
You see it, Rita?
Actually, wait.
See this one?
Improvement resolution, my law, take it out. They get October 11. Why does it say REACH?
It says REACH.
I think they're supposed to be there for it.
You've got to open it there, that's why I don't like this thing. Get it open. Yeah, it's REACH.
I don't, what do you see?
Yes, REACH.
Yes, that should be in there. No, that's not supposed to be there.
Yeah, how do you take it out? Can you take it out? So why don't we, why don't we come back, why don't we come back and vote on this, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna pull that for, we're gonna, we're gonna pull that, Rita's gonna take it out, okay?
Yes, all of those.
Okay, so she's gonna take that out.
Take that out, we'll come back to that. We're gonna table that for now. Dental one.
Yeah, right, put it back.
So I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
I appreciate that.
So we're gonna approve Catapult and, and Smile?
Yes.
Yeah, we can approve those, but the other one needs to come out. How do you take that out? Can you take it out now?
Move that to October twenty. We'll move it to the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, okay.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna, I can't do it right this minute.
I don't know if we vote on that, on that.
I'm taking it right out.
We, but we have a motion out?
I'll take it out.
But don't we have a motion out there?
We have a motion right now, right, to authorize further school improvement service memorandum. Smile Dental and Catapult. Catapult.
Yes.
That's a motion.
Right.
That's what we're gonna be voting on.
But that is in there, so how do you take it out, so we won't vote on that whole resolution?
You move that to October twenty-fifth.
I'm gonna move it to the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Um, is that, I wanna.
I'd say you're not voting on that.
For to counsel, is, there's a resolution embedded in all of this, and we wanna take one of them out. Can we just vote on it and she takes it out? How does that work? Okay.
Yep.
So we're gonna make a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, can I have a motion to remove Reach from their resolution, nine point one, from the consent agenda? Okay. And second? Um, questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
So a motion that. You motion to table?
A motion to table, that's part of the resolution.
I second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
I think that's it.
Nope. Student Services, ten point one?
Motion.
Can I have a motion for approval of services, people personnel services memorandum number six, dated October eleventh, two-thousand twenty-two?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Rising. Uh, yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know anything about Rising.
Dr. BC, there's a question.
On Rising Brown, what exactly is the service involved? I don't know anything about him, just asking.
Okay, and that's, and honestly, that's a Kim, Kim, Dr. Kim's question. It's a new program they put inside there for, I think, this, this special, special needs kid. It's in, it's in the special needs area. Yeah.
So it's, it's part of the.
Yes, part of the whole. It's a new pro, it's a movement program, where kids going.
All right, you're understanding. Okay, all right, that's, that's.
Yeah, because it's the kids learn through movement.
Right.
And I, I, and I saw the program when she presented to Kim.
All those in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. So we're gonna go into executive?
So we're gonna have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of?
Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of, um, purpose of exploring settlement and personnel issues? Motion?
Executive.
Oh, okay. You second? Okay. Uh, questions, concerns, discussions?
I don't think there are.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay.